Be, what, ten thousand dollars?
Right, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, my only concern is that we haven't actually sent them the termination letter yet, have we?
No, and the reason I haven't is because the other elevator company expressed some concern that if we tell them before we ban them from the property, that they'll come on the property and wreak havoc on our elevators.
Right, um, okay. All right, why don't we get to that? Is it about the elevators?
Yeah.
No, wait, we have that item on the agenda, so why don't we get to it?
Have to go to the point.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to see if there's any...
Did you hear what this lady just said?
Sorry?
You want to repeat it to them? No, 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 repeat it to them here. We have to send them a cease and desist letter.
We're going, we're going, yeah. We're going to do that, I'm waiting because if I send it to them too soon, I want to make sure that they don't come on the property
And sabotage.
And sabotage elevators, okay? Within the next few days, that letter is going out to them, certified letter.
So then you're gonna have to tell the gig that they're not allowed to do it.
Okay, that's coming up later, let's hold any questions on the elevator. Um, the other question I had on the manager's report is, uh, the pool. Um, he said there were some upgrades that were done due to the health department, but the pool has been down, it was down for like a week, right? It was closed for a week or something like that?
Yes.
Why was that?
There was pumps in the pool.
Well, we shut, we shut it down during the hurricane, obviously.
Right.
But there, there was a pump that went, uh, it had to be replaced. The seals went on it, and when we went, when they went to put the new seals in, they found out that the impeller shaft had been warped.
Is, is that, uh, are we gonna approve that expense on this agenda?
Yes, I believe that's in there.
It's in here?
I think it's in there. Did we, did we get their, well, we may not have gotten their, uh...
Oh, okay.
May not have gotten their invoice yet on that.
That was down before the hurricane.
Okay, so, let's move on to the next item. With the sales and leasing.
Let's not recount.
Yeah, I'm not gonna...
Let's not recount any of the rollovers.
No, I'm just gonna do the purchase. Uh, O one V, one oh five, a hundred and five thousand. S three Q, fifty-five thousand. B two L, a hundred thousand. I one E, a hundred and three thousand. G two R, that was a quick plan D. G two P, a hundred and forty-five nine. Y one J, ninety. N one P, a hundred and thirty. O two O, fifty-seven thousand. And that's it for the purchase.
Did you say Y one J? Y one J, did you say? It says denied, though.
Oh, sorry, yes, you're right.
A couple, a few of them say denied, like several of them say denied.
Let me see.
Other purchases.
Let me see.
I think, I think almost all of them say denied.
No, no, this one, no, O one V is approved, one oh five. B two L was canceled by the owner. Uh, I one E was, uh, the realtor canceled. G two R was the quick plan D. Y one J was denied. Uh, N one P, that was denied. Uh, O two O, fifty-seven thousand was approved. And that was it for purchases. Why were they suddenly denied? They didn't need the qualification.
Um, okay.
Do you want to go over to the server?
I guess, um... Normally we do all those leases, so why don't you just read the leases that were denied then? The leases that were denied.
Leases that were denied? B three Y. M two R. O three X. E one I. O two G, S three R. And that was it.
Okay, um, so, we, we need a motion to approve, um, all the actions taken. Sorry?
I have a problem with all of those rejections, which is why I'm here.
I'll make them up.
Okay, wait, wait a minute, we, yeah, so there's a motion, we need a second, and then there's, there's audience, uh, there's not any questions, so is there a second? Okay, so Cristo made the motion, and Marcio seconded it, but we have, um, we have an objection from, I guess, one of the owners, so, uh, yes. Give him the mic, maybe.
Thank you. So working? Can I have anything? I had an application denied. I'll give you a quick synopsis of the person. She put herself through law school. She, she put herself through law school, and she's twenty-four years old.
Further what?
Is that better?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You gotta, you gotta watch those sounds.
If anyone can't hear me, just let me know. Um, as I said, lovely, lovely girl, wish I had twenty-seven tenants like her. I know her personally, well, listen, I, I'm very, very particular about who I put into my units. You know that I, I, I'm getting thirteen hundred dollars for a studio for this apartment. She's a single woman, put herself through law school, obviously she makes enough money, she has no criminal record of any kind. Her credit score was originally in the low sixes, it's now up to six sixty. Um, she, I got a, uh, which I told the office, I had a, a credit prognosticator that said if she paid off X amount of money, that it would go up X amount of points, which would actually be over six seventy-five, it'd be close to seven hundred, actually, or six eighty, or six seventy, something like that. But the, she paid off, and she has proof of paying off those debts, and, uh, she can't help it. If you, if you make a payment to someone you owe money to, the onus is on that company to report it to the credit agencies. Sometimes it takes months, but if you have the proof that you paid it, and your credit score in a case like this lingers in the balance moving to a place, I personally, I, I thought this was beyond ludicrous. You're talking about a super hardworking, fine young woman, uh, who, who paid off her bills, that's the only reason her credit score, when I say low, low sixes, it's now six sixty, or six set, or seven hundred, with the money that she paid off. Uh, I have documentation on this, uh, and she was rejected. Now, I could, I could actually have her come here, I didn't want her to go through that. She works like a twelve-hour days, I mean, she's paid all her own bills, she's a very hardworking, lovely, lovely woman, uh...
What about the income?
She's a...
Pro the income. Does she make the income required?
Of course, yeah, she's an attorney, thirty-five grand.
So why did they reject her?
They rejected her because they said her credit score was too low.
What, what is this credit score?
I think it's as if...
What is the, what is the credit score for the association?
The requirements have gone up from six twenty to six seventy. Now, unfortunately, unfortunately, in the United States, and specifically in this area, I'm somewhat of a credit expert, uh, that's really, really high. I mean, I, I could just take the total.
Six seventy is high?
Well, wait a second, wait a second.
Yeah.
It is high.
I have eight hundred.
Well, that's very nice for you.
But that's not the normal.
Okay, you're, you're in the, you're in the, you're in the...
I'm not normal, I'm not normal anyway.
Ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of America does not have an eight-hundred credit score.
All right.
I myself, personally, for four years, I did a controlled short sale on a two-million-dollar apartment I owned on Allison Island in South Beach. My credit score went down to five ninety. Now, it didn't mean, well, it happened from an eight oh six, and back in the day, in two thousand nine, when you wanted to, uh, do a short sale on, and you went to the bank, as long as the payments were coming in, they didn't care. You had to write a letter saying that you were having peanut butter and jelly sandwiches with your grandmother, and then they went to a committee, and they let you know in three months, and then you're being paid for three months, and basically it was a cluster you-know-why, back in the day. Now, when you do it, they know what's coming. Now, I had offered them in that, at that time, for that unit, uh, I had a buyer for a million three...
What, what unit is this? What unit are you talking about?
Talking about a studio.
It's a studio. Why can't you just make like the five-month maintenance payments? I'm sorry. What, you know, what, why don't try and...
I don't know, Marcio, listen to me. I will put up, listen, I have offered this in the past, I will put up a bond. I have mortgages on nothing. I have millions of dollars worth of property, I'm more than qualified.
Doug, can you, Doug, can you address the board?
You're not ready to go.
Yes, you're right.
So what is your point, Doug? I mean, just clearly state...
I need people like this, that I'm trying to get in, quality people, that I'm very particular about going in, who are paying top dollar, who have no criminal record. The credit criteria, the onus of the credit score needs to be on the owner. Now, if, if the maintenance wasn't paid, and I haven't missed a payment paying for forty years, who do you think they'd come after? They'd come after the owner. They don't, they're not gonna, the, the, the tenant is judgmental afraid. For four hundred dollar security deposit they get is nothing, it's a joke. They'd come after me, and what do you think would happen if they came after me? I'm completely not, not judgment-proof. I have all these apartments, and I have excellent credit now, they claim my club, and I haven't missed a payment. So, the onus of an association is the key, is the key in, out, right? It's people with a criminal record, maybe people who have convictions, because, you know, it doesn't look good if you come home on a Saturday night.
Yes, what do you want to happen right now, Doug?
I want to, I want this...
One sentence, seven words.
I want this person, this attorney, this lovely, hard-working girl, to be approved.
What's your why?
To be approved, and...
You want an exception to the rule.
The rule.
You want it, you want her to get an exa, exception?
No, she, she has an exception.
Doug, Doug, why are you addressing them, address us?
She has an exception.
Want to address them?
She, yeah.
Excuse me, don't say them.
Yeah, why are you talking anymore?
Don't say them, say the audience, don't say them.
That's not the procedure, that's nothing against you.
Doug, don't say them, that's, that's very impolite, say the audience.
Sorry, I didn't mean any disrespect, I apologize.
Okay, um, yeah, thanks, I'm gonna ask Doreen. Either Doreen or somebody from the sales and lease committee to explain this. Doug Doreen, uh, would you like to explain why, or would you like to have the sales and lease? Sales and lease, yeah.
Well, that's what I was just gonna, I was gonna read to you what the file said.
The sales and lease committee chairman happens to be here, so she, she would like to...
When, when we got the paperwork, we did, uh, the... Oh, can, can, oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah, we can hear you. Okay, uh, when we got the, our paperwork, her score was six twenty-two credit score.
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, it was denied on that basis, but then, she has, I don't wanna say the number, a lot, a lot of money in debt, so the rent, the rent-to-income ratio, her income does not cover her monthly debt.
But that's from school. Doreen, is that from the school?
Yes, that's a real number.
That's an attorney?
Yeah. You, you remind me, Charles, oranges and black.
That's gold, John, that's it.
Hey, Tony, you remind me of oranges and new blacks.
And that's good that you want the gold. I love people. My niece is a lawyer, and she'll be in debt forever from law school. No, he's responsible, he's supposed to take responsibility, she's only twenty-four, lawyer.
Oh, okay, um, yeah, we have a question from one of the sales and lease committee.
I'm gonna talk for the sales and leasing. Doc Meyer has twenty-six apartments.
Twenty-seven. I got a top apartment here.
Okay.
Please address the board.
Doc Meyer has twenty-six apartments here.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. I keep forgetting the one. And we see most of the places, you do have, you make apartments nice, and you do a good job. Congrats to them. In the meantime, when you, you oft, we often go to your paperwork, or your apartments go through, and when one thing don't go through, Doc Meyer, you drive us all crazy.
I know, I understand.
Because you feel that we have to do exactly what you want.
I want...
The thing is, I didn't see the file.
I'd like to answer your question. I wanna say one thing, to answer what you just said. I get a lot of people who come, who, I put myself in the place of Ford, as if I would be on the sales and lease, and you have no idea how many crap I keep out of here that might even go through, how much crap we keep out of here. Well, that's true, you do anything, good job, yeah. But I also do my part, and many people, I think, are the horrible that would get put over here, I don't pay them. I pay the creme de la creme, only the creme de la creme, that I personally would guarantee, that I personally know, and I have, and I've done big research into them, and I know their personalities, histories, and their family, that's who I put in. So yes, I take it personally, this is a lovely, lovely girl. I want thirty minutes of this.
It's Doug, Doug. I understand what you said, we have guidelines to follow.
Section eight.
I, Doug, we have guidelines to follow, we just go by the guidelines.
But I...
But not people personally. She got her, she got her credit score at the, that's why...
Her credit score is, she paid, I can't help it, they, they...
You know where...
It's all the same, you don't have to...
Yes, no.
Um, we do have time, a lot of them today, and I don't wanna spend too much time on this one.
Can I think about that first?
Go ahead.
Right, I mean...
I, I don't know you.
Okay, we don't know.
I don't know anything about you, how can I know?
Okay, we don't know, eh?
You don't know me, so I can't approve this.
Okay, we don't know that.
Yeah, you, you need to move on, so, um...
He's got the twenty-seven...
I don't know if, uh, there's been a motion and a second on the table to approve as, as is, does somebody wanna make another motion on?
What is the motion on the board?
No, the motion was to approve the entire report as is. Uh, that was prior, um, Doug making a...
Okay, we paying, uh, yearly maintenance?
We paying a year of maintenance?
Absolutely.
So, so I'll make a motion to approve that as is.
Pending, pending, a year?
No, we're paying a year and then, yeah.
So you're, you're making the motion pending, you pay it a year?
Yeah, just one or, just one or two, because I saw two rejections.
Only one, no?
There's actually one more?
No. It was still a year, uh...
No, listen, Chris, let me tell you about this.
Every time we, every time we reject one of his buildings, you do the same thing, so that every time he comes, that just, no! Without a doubt.
No, no, and, and as long as, as long as it's a year and then...
Then don't give us his paperwork.
We haven't heard it, we haven't heard it.
Yeah, I'm in trouble.
End of story.
There's one other person, let me just say, I wasn't ready to bring it up.
Then don't give us his paperwork.
Wait a second. The second person is a person who has worked...
Just put him in there. We don't need his paperwork.
Listen, he's from the Caribbean, he's, he's worked, I think he just got his citizenship, he's worked at the airport for ten years, he has a ten, uh, seven hundred credit score, he has no criminal record of any kind, but, but he paid in, yes, he has property and businesses in this, in this country, he has, he should, wait a second, he produced a bank account in his name, sixty-two thousand dollars.
Oh, is that the guy with the...
Listen, he was willing to pay one year in advance, and he would still have forty thousand dollars in US bank, which is equal to the credit...
Doug, I'm gonna have to stop it here, because we do have a big agenda. This can't be, this can't be all about, you know, yeah, so, um...
One, get the second one.
There, there's a motion and a second on the table, does somebody wanna change that motion, or...
I did the motion already, for just only one, I don't know one, sorry about the second, I mean, but, but we paying a year of, uh, maintenance, you know, then, before the lease approved.
It's tomorrow.
Hey, good, nice. I mean, I'll, I'll make the motion, it's, it's up to you guys, I'm only one guy.
Uh, is there, is there a second, okay, Cristo or Marcio who made the motion, do you wanna change that, um, to reflect what, uh, Marat said? Marc, Marcio? Hello? Do you wanna change it?
What is that? It's fine?
I think it was actually Cristo that made the motion. Was it Cristo? Are you there? I mean, are you both wanting to change that motion? I mean, I, I, you know... Uh, we was proposing to pay the maintenance a year in advance on one of the, one of the, uh, which unit is this? Three R, that's three R.
But then we're gonna have this list.
Okay, um, I, I just wanna get this over with, so is, is that what you're doing? Is that what you wanna do, Cristo and Marcio? Cause I'm really wanting to get to the other stuff on this agenda, one way or the other. Okay, is that, is that what you wanna do? Cristo and Marcio, is that what you wanted? Okay, um, it looks like they accepted the motion from Marat. On this one, on this one of them.
Don't ask about the other one, please.
Okay, so, uh, there's a motion and a second on the table to, um, approve, what is it, S two R? S three R, in addition to all the other, um, actions of the sales and lease committee for the period, pending receipt of one-year maintenance for a S three R unit. Uh, and, uh, in a second, anybody wanna be recorded as a no? Anybody wanna say no on that?
The board waking up?
Somebody have guts, man, nobody has any balls in that, I'm like...
Okay, so, why don't you talk?
Every time, I don't care if you have a thousand, okay? Every time we have, and he filed that to do with you, we have to approve it. Every time we say no, you come here and you cry to them. And then it all gonna praise you. I'm gonna praise you, I'll tell you, out, out and out.
Excuse me, okay, that's right, that's right.
No order.
There's a motion and a second, uh, is there, is there... Both of you, please, please, Doug, Doug, Doug. The mic, please.
Why should I have to leave?
Doug, you got what you wanted, quiet.
Anyway, was there, was there anybody wanting to be recorded as no? I hear no no's, it's approved, you got one, not both.
All right, don't talk about the other one, please.
Okay.
All right, just go. Hey, I have a bridge that I want, I want you to buy.
No, Doug, I'm...
Um, anyway, hold on, hold on.
Would you please...
Okay, we have, we have a couple of, I just hear the, uh, FICO score increased, Dan.
Wait, can I ask some questions, please? I'm the sales and lease committee, all right, I mean, the people are here. Uh, I think that, um, the way some of the thing, you know, years ago, when anybody had to buy an apartment here, they had to come into the office with their tile to show what the pad was that was going under the tile, so that it wouldn't bother the people underneath. That doesn't get done, same with the carpet. I see windows, I mean, you walked around, I walked around with you jackets, and, and we looked at the different things, the bill, the windows, they put in hurricane windows in the AdaWise first floor. They're not, they're not like this. The man on the first floor in the Zurich building, one X, I think it is, or one, no, one Y, he cut up the grass, and he put stones around to get to his, that wasn't supposed to be like that. People are putting patios anywhere they want, the windows. I mean, what's going on here? Doesn't people walk around and see what's going on?
I told him, that's what was gonna happen.
I mean, you're supposed to walk around and you see things. I mean, when Tony gives her a report, and they have to sign off and say, if they sign off and say, this is what's going on, then they have to be penalized if they don't follow through on any of this stuff.
I thought they had to get approval before they put windows in.
Doreen, or Dan?
I didn't hear the question.
Can you address that?
Yes, they have to have approval, there are forms that they are supposed to bring and fill out. To best of my knowledge, nobody has put in windows since I've been here. If there have been windows put in, it was before my time.
No, it's not, it's not, it was just put in, in the AdaWise building, I mentioned it to John, he saw that, there one window, it's one, it doesn't have a paint, and you were here, it just happened, maybe about two weeks ago.
Well, then they'll be, they'll be told they have to take them out, because they didn't get approval.
Did you see it, it's, it's right there?
Yeah.
Okay, and it's been, you're here eight months like Trump, eight months.
Good analogy, very good.
Can I say one thing? The carpet and the walls and the ceiling is disgusting. I've walked in every building in the village, they've been painted, they've been carpeted, and mine is, looks like garbage.
Oh, they're getting it done. They're getting it done.
Doug, there's the third building that, of the three that was approved this year, to have renovation done to it. Uh, Zurich, we're, well, we're in the process now of doing Heidelberg, and as soon as Heidelberg is finished, then they'll be coming here to do not again.
Oh, you better do it before the Canadians get back.
But you have no idea when.
Well, we had a, we had a, a lot of delays, so, but, we're, we're working on the, on the Heidelberg now, and they're doing painting in there, once the painting is finished, then they'll be able to move over to you, because that's the only other thing that has to go into the Heidelberg, is carpet, and that's an outside company that puts it in.
Okay, um...
What about, one more question?
Wait, wait, we can't keep doing this.
And what about, one more question?
The Bordeaux building, I have been complaining about for a year and a half, the carpet is filthy, the, the, uh, tile, the dirt is so embedded, I don't think that could come out without retiring. The laundry room, the table is all stained, the doors, the trash door, every other week, doesn't close, the washing machines are always out, the elevators, always, I can't even take an elevator, you get on and it goes up and down, uh, it looks like a slum. Now, my former neighbor, who, both of them are on the board, the Tracini's, which you know.
Sure.
Right, Terry, as he was going down and moving, he said to me, mark my words, in one year, this building is gonna look like a slum, and that's exactly what it looks like. I'm embarrassed to have anyone come to the house, the, the whole building stinks from mold and mildew, to say nothing of the storage rooms, which I texted you, and I'm always talking to Dan, and the last manager, it stinks. Nobody in their right mind would ever wanna buy a, a apartment in that building. So I'm wondering, why? When is this going to be approved? Where is my maintenance going to? Really, I'm living here twenty-seven years, twenty-seven years, and I've never been this way before.
The garbage smell, and then...
The garbage, garbage, all the, people walk their dogs in the laundry room, which you know what they're doing in the laundry room, they don't have garbage with them, and they're not doing the laundry, and of course, no... And of course, no cameras, and garbage all over the place, it is disgusting, and I'm really tired of it, I'm tired of complaining.
George, you, you heard all these complaints today?
Yes.
We do not have enough maintenance people to cover these buildings, we do not have enough maintenance people.
But when things get fixed, they all stay fixed, a week later, we'll all be recording again.